Time is now 7:00 p.m. I will call this special public hearing of the Charter Revision Commission to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Matthew Radant is present. Blingis Strablins?
Present.
June Gagny?
Present.
Cheryl Hurley?
Here.
Chris Lumpkins?
He's absent.
And Colleen Bogostus is absent. And just as a note, Brendan Wassowitz had submitted his resignation to the commission, so he's no longer on the Charter Revision Commission. And we are awaiting one additional member to be appointed. So the September 26, 2023 special meeting minutes were distributed. Any corrections or?
One correction?
Yes.
The discussion review down on C. B. where I was talking to the tax collector on the cost cap of $12.50 per software and additional $560 quarterly. The $560 would be added to her yearly cost on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
The one-time-only software was $12.50, and then she would have to add $560 on her yearly budget to that.
So that's an additional annual as opposed to quarterly.
Right. Correct. Any motion to adjourn?
You already said as corrected.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes as amended. Any additional discussion?
I'll say nothing.
Cheryl, what was your motion?
Uh-huh.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions?
Aye.
Not further than that, I'm going to approve as well. Item D, public hearing. So this is the second of a scheduled three public hearings. We're having this second public hearing because our first one was one week after we were established. We've had a handful of meetings in the interim, and we decided to afford the public an additional opportunity to either speak to previously made suggestions or come forward with any others that you would like us to discuss or deliberate amongst the board before we start putting together the final draft report. So with that being said, I will turn it over to members of the public. Please state your name, your village, and residence for the record. I don't see the need to time anybody, but if we start, if we give everybody a chance to speak at least once, and then we can come back, there are additional notes or suggestions to make. I will recognize people to speak in case there is any desired follow-ups or additional information from members of the public to each other. So with that being said, the floor is yours.
Sean Bruce, would you mind reading what the amendments you're looking to make are?
There's a whole bunch.
There must be some you're directed down to right now, or no?
So where we currently stand, what I can do is I can say that we've had a number of suggestions that have been made from members of the public, and we have the suggestions that were handed down from the Board of Selectmen when we were appointed to the commission. So I can give you a quick rundown on that. So probably the first one that, and these are from the Board of Selectmen thus far, and I apologize if I miss any that are still in the works or need to be mentioned. We're looking at changing Section 2.4, which would be our town budget process, changing it so that the three parts of the budget, the town, the education, and the capital budget are voted on and approved separately as individually binding options, which means if we pass the town budget and we don't pass the school budget, you would not have to go back and vote on the part of the budget that failed. As part of that change potentially, I'm sorry. Additionally, we're looking at changing the votes on town budgets to be all through referendum on voting machines as opposed to doing the town meeting style where we would read the warning, appoint a moderator, you know, have the option for a voice vote or ballot vote at the town meeting. There's also, we're looking at adding the definition of the WPCA to align with Connecticut General statutes in Sections 5-6 and 8.8-3. There is a requested clarification of how we are electing seven members of the Board of Finance, because currently the language is already a bit, I would describe it as potentially dated and not very clear of how we're going to go forward with a scheduled three members being elected as opposed to two. We are also looking at adding the, or clarifying the pension board under section, or adding a new section, 5.7, to have the pension board added in as appointment by the Board of Selectmen. Potentially currently it is made up of, I believe, the chairs of a handful of the boards in town. This one would likely be appointed as other commissions and other appointed boards are. We are also looking at Section 2.5, I think it's F, Section F, basically changes with when ordinances are being drafted and passed, the notices for those ordinances moving back out to 30 days as opposed to the current 10 days. And I believe that's really being driven more by the reduction in volume of any printed media right now. So like a newspaper, it's not everybody has a daily publication of it. There are some that differ, but I think that's the spirit of that change. Let's see. These are my Cliff Notes on the suggested changes.
Changes.
Yep. Let's see. We do have a series of typos that have been brought forward to us, incidental typos, so the repetition of a word. So when we get the opportunity, last charter revision, there weren't any changes that actually got approved for that, so I believe that was the reason why we didn't go in and reprint the charter with the changed typos. So that's something, that if something was to be passed, we'd have the opportunity to do. But my understanding of that is we don't necessarily need to put that as a question to fix the typos. That would be something that we could take care of as part of the process.
No, that's just spelling errors, correct?
It would be spelling errors correctly, if, correct. If there is, there would be no changing of a word to a different word where that would impact the implied context or how that section would read. And then there are the additions of what I believe, let's see, correcting where I'm wrong, but we would be looking to add the Ag Commission and Conservation Commission onto the list of appointed commissions in the charter as well. And then we also have had a number of suggestions from the public brought forward.
Can I mention something real quick?
Absolutely.
That in this, it's Agriculture Commission. That's something they don't do, agriculture.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear before it passes down.
Thank you. So some of the suggestions that have been made from the public, again, changing how we vote and approve or rectifying what seems to have gone wrong in the written section of 2.4, individually approving parts of the budget as we move forward. That's been brought up numerous times by the public. Changing tax due dates to a quarterly basis as opposed to, I believe the current, see what would be semi-annual as opposed to, you know, the?
Bi-annual.
Bi-annual. So we would be, the tax bills would be issued quarterly as opposed to twice a year.
Can I ask what about that?
I believe that's probably in the interest of not having a larger tax bill all do at once where if an individual's not able to pay the principal, they would be accruing interest or a late fee or charge on a smaller balance over time.
Would that cause an added cost to the town?
It would likely re-
Small.
It would probably be a very small reduction in the interest collected as part of a late fee, if interest isn't the right word, but.
No, no, I meant like sending out bills and all that.
Yeah, we've already talked to the tax collector on that, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
Tax collector on that, that she would have a one-time fee of, I believe it's $1,250 per software update, and then it would add an additional $560 to her annual budget for ads in the, you know, in the turnpike buyer. So it's not an exorbitant amount, but, you know, a lot of people are struggling, and she actually thought that that would be a good idea.
Perfect.
So she was on board with that.
And to speak to some of the other suggestions that have been made and discussed up to this point, there have been the suggestions that the charter should include mentions of bylaws, either to require them or to delve into the roles and responsibilities of boards. There have been discussions about whether having Connecticut General statutes cited in the charter were appropriate, would be something that could be handled and changed. There was the question about whether the town clerk could be changed to a hired versus an appointed position, which is very similar to the question that we had at the previous town charter revision commission. We have also had some discussion regarding the suggestion about the Board of Selectmen potentially being increased to five members. And then we have also had some, we had a request about the Ethics Commission to review how that is set up in our town charter, whether there is anything that we feel should be either rebalanced, reviewed, any changes that we would think would be appropriate to present through a charter revision process. Also, a suggestion of alternate members for the Police Commission, which I don't think we've really spoken to at great length, but that was, I believe that was Colleen's suggestion up here as well. So I apologize if I missed any of the additional suggestions. I can certainly give you a copy of the lists that I'm working with.
Thank you, and I apologize for being here in all the other meetings. You have to bear.
It's good to see you now.
Dave Shurmann, listen. Is there any place in the present charter that defines the term legislative body?
So in the very first, not to misquote him, but I do not believe legislative body is so much defined as it is established in 2.2-1, "The legislative powers of the town shall be vested in the town meeting except as otherwise provided in this chapter." So that would be page one of the charter that I have. And that is, to my knowledge, having done a specific word search as well through here in text documents, that is the-
Only mention?
The only mention of legislative body.
Powers.
It alludes to legislative power, but it does state that they're vested in the town meeting except as otherwise provided. In, but not-
And has one of the exceptions?
The exceptions, in Section 2.2-1, I don't believe that anything is clearly stated as being an exception. That's my understanding of it thus far. Now, we do have, so I guess the best way that I could explain it, to my knowledge, would be, we have the Board of Selectmen established as that executive power of the town, and under the section that has the Board of Selectmen, it does speak to those powers. And those are also echoed in the Connecticut General statutes. I don't have the specific citation on me, but there is, there is language in the General statutes that does say that you need to differentiate essentially what the legislative power is or isn't at that point. So establishing it as a town meeting, that is our legislative body. That's how, that's how I've read it and understood it, and I believe that's how it's been interpreted and understood in the past.
I don't think always, and that's what I'm concerned about. Very clearly seen, the town membership who come to the meetings for that particular issue being seen as a legislative body. I, we can rephrase it whatever is appropriate, but the difference between the executive branch and the legislative branch is very, has to be a very clear demarcation, and I think that's important.
Excuse me, Naomi Smith, I'm Bill. One of the statutes that I review is it says that whereas under its statute, we have at least one annual town meeting per year to be considered a legislative body, form of government. So we have to be careful there. What's interesting in the statute, though, is it says that the chief executive officer of the selectmen has the right at any town meeting to call for it to go to a referendum. So that is part of the statute that I've been reviewing. So yes, our charter really does need a lot of clarification with how the legislative structure works and how the executive, I agree, and where we don't want to remove or give away any power.
If I could ask one more question? One of my other questions is with the pension, the pension board, why is it being, and I don't know if you can answer this, but why is the recommendation for that to become an appointed board instead of?
It's not.
So there's no recommendation as to become appointed, just?
Yeah, no, no, just clarifying it in the charter, because if you notice, there is nothing in the charter.
Because I-
I can speak a little further than that?
Yeah, you could.
Yeah, what the issue is, I'll take a little history on the pension board, initially established by ordinance 26 in 1970 to administer a maintained retirement plan for the paid employees of the town. And then June 30th of 92, there was a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen that was voted as follows, to adopt a pension board as follows, with two members of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Education Chair, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Board of Finance Chair. Then, in October 2006, a letter to clarify the composition of the membership was held, and it was determined that the superintendent position may be held by an out-of-town employee, and that caused an issue because then in order to vote for pension, you prefer to have a resident of the town. So at that time, it was changed to a composition of three members of the Board of Selectmen and one member of the Board of Education as chairperson and the Board of Finance chairperson. I've been working on putting together something with a submitting of an ordinance, number 26, a modification for that, or either that or a newly constructed, to show the newly constructed membership, and that as defined from 2006. And that, and once it's done, we also need to have that placed in a town meeting to go forward and approve that. But we should have something in the charter to say who we are.
So this is where one of the issues seems to be coming into place, is that because our ordinances are not basically coinciding with our charter.
That's what we're trying to catch up.
Would it be better to just possibly potentially look into codifying all of the ordinances that we have so that they become organized and laid out?
That's where we've been working on for a couple of years. We're catching these as they go, and charter revision helped that in this case, because you see nowhere in the charter that it says pension.
So, okay, so if, because if the ordinances already been adopted, that there has to be a pension board, the ordinance coincides with the charter? Because once we adopted the charter-
It's something that was not put in there for a long time, so now we're trying to clean that up. That's what one of the suggestions was, to put this on the question for the ballot. So I think we have to do one thing first, which is talk about ordinance 26 when we get there, and then once that's done, it'll be done well before we go to, you know, voting on that, to put it into the records of the charter.
Okay, thank you.
And I apologize if I answered to Sean earlier, speaking to the suggestions, I was speaking off notes that were taken from a month and a half ago at this point.
Right.
Some of these discussions have clearly evolved or changed, had more information was shown, or have shifted approach. So just soothe any nerves on that front. If you wouldn't mind, just to clarify one more thing. If you heard earlier today, we're talking about adding the Agricultural Commission and the Conservation Commission into the charter. Well, those were established by ordinances as well, but we haven't, again, cleaned up the charter to add those in, and it should.
Yeah. Minority repul doesn't have an effect with pension board, or does it?
No. Because it's all three members of the chart of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And then you have, again, whoever's the chairperson of the Board of Education, the chairperson of Finance.
Oh, just like, one, one-
We're talking finances versus pensions.
Okay, so one, you said a member of the Board of Finance, you didn't say the chair.
Yeah, it's at the end.
Okay. I don't know, Board of Education, sorry.
Kevin, just for clarification, the first original was the adoption of a pension board into the town, correct?
Yep, it didn't say what it was doing.
Okay.
So we might clarify that as well.
Okay.
Is there a town pension? Is there a police pension? And do we have authority to then vote and make action at that time?
So then just for clarification, for the charter commission, you're not looking to add a pension board, you're looking to just add language-
Exactly.
-of the pension board and the clarification.
Just like, acknowledge, just like, the Conservation-
Yeah, that's what we're clarifying.
Because it couldn't otherwise just be added to the charter without this process being undertaken.
Correct.
To formally state that we do have that for our town charter.
So going back to the last meeting that I was in attendance at, where there was discussion that this charter revision is kind of moving at a faster pace due to trying to get the language cleaned up for the town, you know, the budget season. This is one more area where I think it gives just cause that there be another charter revision erected soon after, where you have an 18-month span so that the selectmen, as well as the charter revision, can work kind of in connection with cleaning up these ordinances so we have proper ordinances that are matching our charter. Because another question right now was like last night, I know Planning and Zoning, there was discussion of a text amendment, but we have in our charter that all municipal projects have to go in front of P and Z, and that's a town vote. So this is, we need a lot, a lot of cleanup. Thank you, that's all I have.
We only have so many spots on the bell, so what we don't accomplish is something that we have to do.
That's right, yeah. I agree, that note for-
Continue.
And that is part of our process as well, is just making sure that what we do recommend as changes, coming from any corner, that we've got the information in front of us and that we feel comfortable moving forward with the information we know and that has been vetted.
Carly DeStardens, Plainfield Pike, I apologize for being late, so if any of this was covered, I apologize if I'm being redundant. Looking at past charter revisions and the questions, I think it's important to consider what has been put forward to the public and what has already been rejected by the public, because sometimes a question continues to be put on the ballot, the people continue to reject it, and I just think that is, it doesn't bring confidence to the residents that their voice is being listened to. So in considering what questions to put on the ballot, if you could take into consideration those things that voters have rejected one, two, three times in the past five to six years, I think that would just be important. I know part of the process is determining when to have the ballots, if there's a special election or on the next election, and timeframes. I think it's important to consider voter turnout. So when you look at having a special election specifically for the ballot, just the charter question, so that there's no associated election with that ballot, your voter turnout is probably going to be 1% to 3%, and even with significant get-out-the-vote messaging, I doubt that a special election in March, which is purely charter revision, would reach a level of a municipal election, which is usually 25% to 30% voter turnout. So with something as important as the self-governance of our town, where you want voters' voices to be heard, I would advocate for ballot questions being put on the November 2024 ballot because it is a presidential year, you're going to have 80% voter turnout. The number of offices up for election in 2024 is, I believe, six, so there would be room on the ballot with a double side of the ballot. I understand there's a budget issue that people want to get resolved before the next budget, but in our aim for speed, I worry about thoroughness and public involvement because the charter is the people's voice and their determination. So looking at 1% to 3% of the town making the decision, or up to as many as 80% of the town making a decision, I think it's important to consider that voter turnout issue. When you look at budget votes, I think the highest voter turnout we've had for a budget vote is maybe 5% to 10%. So just considering voter turnout, if you want maximum participation of the public, then I think you would want to put it on the ballot that has the maximum amount of exposure and participation. And then my third thing is, having, being chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I've also participated on other boards, including charter revision, and we on Planning and Zoning every 10 years have to do the Plan of Conservation and Development, and that is very much an interdisciplinary document. So in our meetings, what we did was we invited boards and commissions on certain nights to review parts of the Plan of Conservation and Development that related to their specific function. So when you look at the charter and you see sections that do relate to boards and commissions, I would, I would ask that you reach out to those boards and commissions to review what's in the charter, what's in their bylaws, what's in their regulations, so we can once again ensure consistency across all town documents, because that is important. And there's also state statutes, state statutes. So when we think about items on here that have been revised and things that have not, I mean, state laws change all the time. We just had October 1st, different laws effective, we're making changes to planning and zoning regulations because of the change to public acts and Connecticut General statutes. So just considering that the charter, just like the Plan of Conservation and Development, is an interdisciplinary document that impacts all areas of the town, so when you're looking and going through, just, you know, inviting those members of associated boards to attend and give feedback on that section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, or comment I'll make on that is, as the commission is established, we don't actually get to choose the election that this, that the recommended question would be. We can certainly make a recommendation, both individually, we could, you know, for what it's worth, we could, you know, have a resolution just recommending a date, but that ultimately comes down to the Board of Selectmen's purview for what that would be. Anyone?
Robert Sepp, Plainfield. My main interest is the capital improvement and how it is done. As far as I'm concerned, the charter, it is pretty clear on how that operation is supposed to be.
I mean, state laws change all the time. We just had October 1st, different laws effective. We're making changes to planning and zoning regulations because of the change to public acts and connected general statutes. So just considering that the charter, just like the plan of conservation and development, is an interdisciplinary document that impacts all areas of the town. So when you're looking and going through, just, you know, inviting those members of associated boards to attend and give feedback on that section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, or comment I'll make on that is, as the commission is established, we don't actually get to choose the election that this, that the recommended question would be. We can certainly make a recommendation, both individually, we could, you know, for what it's worth, we could, you know, have a resolution just recommending a date. But that ultimately comes down to the board's selectmen's purview for what that would be.
Anyone?
Robert Sinek, Plainfield. My main interest is the capital improvement and how it is done. As far as I'm concerned, the charter, it is pretty clear on how that operation's supposed to be. And it always seems to be a misconception how that binds into the operating budget. It just calls it a waste source, but it's not. It's a budgetary item at the end of the year. So you really have to clarify that in the charter, that that's the way it's going to go, going properly going forward.
Again, I would just caution the boards, you know that this is only an example, and it was only because I wanted to find out how spacing would look. So what I did was I asked company that knows of the ballots during the election to... So I asked, and again, there's redundancy. One question, there's a misstatement, another going...
Please, I'm wondering why there's two.
Oh, we're taking a little question two, it says, shall tall budgets?
Tall budgets, but they corrected themselves.
So what I'm doing that for is, I wanted to be able to give as much information to the board and to the public as possible. This is just an example of how many questions you would fit on one page. My concern would be too many questions, because if then you have to flip it over and you've got other questions, we had one a year, 14, and that was a lot.
That was during an election?
2007.
It was on the election.
Yeah. So the concerns that I have are, you know, can we talk about what can go on there? If you want 12, 13, 14, that's fine, but what's the impact people actually looking at the whole time? I would suggest that the most important ones that you clarify would be upfront. I guess why the first one there is about that issue concerning, they're put three budget questions.
Correct.
So again, it's just for spacing, it's not a, what we've chosen at all. It's just I'm looking to try to figure out how many things can go on there and be able to be viewed by public. The second part of this is, I think you mentioned before something about, well, we have spoken about before, we talked about the attorney's opinion about different questions and if they're legal or not, and how they should be worded when done so. And the third thing is, how does that tie into the actual charter? So what I'm doing is I'm working with the attorney on legalese. I'm looking at making sure that the wording appears to be correct, and I'm working with what I would consider would be the changes in a redline version of the charter, and giving all that to him to say, what will your opinions be on these questions, or do they need to be reworded, or does the charter itself need to be changed to relate to that example? So we're working on this early, so we can get it down as fine as possible. Then maybe one or two other questions that might be feasible to fit on here, and then we can add those into the attorney's work after. But I want to start this process right now. My quick point was, hey, early about the third question, you know, you're talking about your capital improvement, and what does it really mean? It's not really a wish list, and I've explained it before, we know that capital improvement is needed to list out the things you have for grant. They would say, well, you haven't got this in your budget for five-year capital at all. So I want to make sure that people, you know, it is an important question, but what's the tie into the other questions? I think if you separate the three questions on their own merit, it'll be, I think, much safer, but I think we should still talk about that.
One follow-up question, and I know that this is definitely a concern, given why we're even having to revisit the budget question in the first place, the redline change and what it would look like in the charter.
Mm-hmm.
Are you able to speak to when that type of document would be available to the public for viewing, or if it would be made available to the public for viewing prior to any kind of vote?
Absolutely. I can't do the date, because I don't know what, how long the attorney's going to take a look at this and get back to us, but I can say that absolutely it would be something available for the public. Because that way, not only does the board see it, but the public can see it, and maybe there's something that we all miss, and that someone else can say, shouldn't that word be this, or change, and have something else set.
Because I know that given, given our current timeline, we anticipate having both the questions ironed out for review before we start making any kind of decisions on what we would like to put to a final draft report before our third public hearing. So that there might be some adjustments that need to be made regarding the legality of how such a change might be worded. And I think that, given whatever went wrong last time, we would like to see exactly, as close as we can and as clearly as we can, what those changes would actually materialize to. So that if ratified, then we already know, we voted yes on this, this is what they said the change would look like, given the timeframe after, this is what the change ends up looking like.
Right. That's why I tried to do this all upfront, get it done as soon as possible so that we can all look at. So one more thing in there, I think I noticed on the third column down, bottom left corner. That was another one that I thought of after the fact. It was civil preparedness.
Right, and I just, I'll interrupt you real quickly, because the public doesn't have visibility to this. This suggestion reads as, shall the civil preparedness advisory council be removed from the town charter? That's the, that's the suggestion on the sample now.
And just to clarify what that would be, years ago, there was civil preparedness, you used to have four fire department chiefs, you used to have a chief of police, it used to be your fire marshal, could be the emergency management system group, it could be the analyst corps, to sit down and talk about things that are, and the leadership of the town, and talk about the things that are issues they want to make sure they clarify or fix. Now, I will say that we have been doing that already for the past year or so. We've been talking about doing quarterly meetings and stuff with fire marshal, police chief, theme services, and myself. And we go through some items and talk about what's upcoming, happening, and so that is going on. I don't know if we should actually engage these people to be appointed officially. I have to take a look back at the ordinances, I have to take a look back at what's been done in the past history-wise for any minutes from their meetings, but it's something I just thought of that maybe we, or only the other one, that we establish it, or we take it out of the charter. And for the public and for the members of the commission, according to the current charter, and it's been like that for a long time, they suggest every five years, but you know, we've been meeting and having charter commissions, because there's so many little things that we need to fix. I anticipate that we try and do something immediately after this concludes, and then start up another charter revision commission. I just don't know if we can get on to the November, because when this completes, you only got six months to go into November of the next, next year, and be another quick turn around. I mean, I can look at the dates and make sure that, you know, if we could do it, but again, it's a quick, I would say it's a quick turnaround, but I'll try.
Just to clarify, it would require the appointment of an entirely new commission.
Absolutely.
Because ours technically terminated upon the adoption of...
So everything starts from the very beginning, fresh.
Just a clarification question. So there's no flexibility in the establishment of charter revision, where charter revision could propose some questions in March and some on the November ballot, a split?
Just whenever the work is done during that charter revision, is that's the stuff that's put on there. There's no copyout of saying, I'd like to have these go into the following, because that's not part of their work. They would have to be separated, so. Again, I'll look at the days to see if we can actually get the six-month window in there. I just don't know. I'll talk to the state about that to say, if we already have established dates, I can get prior. We modify some of them, but it's pretty close. If we can do that, absolutely, because we have a great starting point. There's other things we may or may not be able to put on here that you want to start right away with, and they go on. This one, again, if you, I don't mind sharing this with you, but this basically says, we're going to pass that around on the top of it. It's not the election cycle, it says it's charter revision only. And I put a suggested date, date down there is March 26. But anyways, that's what we're trying to do. We look at that every day, we look and see more things all the time. What does this mean? What does that mean? Does it need clarification?
Question. So technically, so you're saying your work is done as soon as that election is held, even if there's still parts you're working on?
Not necessarily. So our process from here on out, for my own sake, I'm making sure I don't misstate anything. We have additional two regular scheduled meetings prior to our third public hearing. And that third public hearing, we will have the draft final report, and then we have a meeting following that to approve.
We're on a different topic here. My question is, why can't just continue this charter revision, continue?
Well, if, I'm sorry.
Your work's not complete, but this is what's ready for now. The next batch will come up next time.
So once we submit our final draft report to the town clerk, and then it goes to the board of selectmen, they have a leg of the process that upon their approval of some or all of the draft report, that, if I understand the general statutes correctly, terminates our body as the appointed commission for that, that run, for that time.
And then, one more thing. Did he had mentioned the civil preparedness, he's getting that in. Does the charter currently address the civil, that group?
Yes.
Does that say who's involved in that?
No, that's the problem.
So you just need to make it so that it's the...
If I can do it by ordinance, then we're great. If we want to continue it, that's the question.
I think at this point, the way things are right now, it needs to stay.
Well, I know, I hear you, but the issue is that we have been defunct for X amount of years.
Correct. But it's been happening, it's just been unofficially.
I would have to go to each of those members to say, is this what you would like to do? I don't want to just force them, I want to be able to work together. Just recognizing the audience, unfortunately unable to these mornings, and I, this is Dan.
Yes. No, Dean Heskevich, I just haven't made it to the town clerk, based on timing, but I was able to make it here for the meeting, so. Glad to meet you all, glad to be part of this team, and with the support of making this charter a lot better than it has been in the past, so.
I can definitely say, Dan, thank you for volunteering, and I guess this would go to the audience as well. All of the, all of the minutes of our previous meetings, as well as videos for all of one, are available online, minutes on the town calendar, YouTube for the watch, dot media, so we'll connect after the meeting, we'll get you fully up to speed. Follow?
Yeah, just one item. I'd like to see the town's Facebook page utilized more to publicize public hearings and public info sessions. Right now, I understand that agendas are posted on municipal calendar on the Plainfield CT website, but as we know, people find information on Facebook. So if we're not also sharing the municipal calendar on Facebook, people are not going to seek it out. But if they're already following the town Facebook page, that is a great way for the information to be readily available. I understand there's things that are minimally required by law, but there are also things we can do to have a better communication plan with our people, to really facilitate people understanding that this is your opportunity to have your voice and your government. I've made that request also with planning and zoning agendas and public hearing notices, so that it can circulate better, because a notice in the term pack by or the Norwich Bulletin is not reaching the population. A link on the plainfieldct.org website is not meeting the population. But when it is on Facebook, it can be liked, it can be shared, it can be commented on, it can be circulated. And there just has to be a very clear disclaimer that Facebook itself is not a public forum or public hearing for our official processes. So if people want to be heard, they need to take their Facebook comments and present them to the board at the public meeting. So I think we can help facilitate more public involvement in the process if we start utilizing some of those social media applications, with the understanding that, you know, the comments on Facebook are not submitted into the record unless they show up here and submit them.
I like to echo that, and it's inexpensive.
I would like to say a lot of seniors do not have access to computers, but they certainly have access to their phones and Facebook, you know, and they do see that, and that's what they respond to more so than online, because they don't go.
I certainly appreciate everybody coming out tonight, regardless of how me I found out. Anybody else who would like to speak to the commission?
I have one question. So are we doing a capital budget or capital improvement plan?
I believe in the charter, it is the capital improvement, capital improvement program.
Program.
And if I understand some of the question that has been raised in previous meetings, that's part of the confusion, plays with identifying this as part of the town budget process, in both how we vote for it at the same time, or how we view it as part of a required three checkmarks to consider the entire budget passed? Am I accurate in understanding the question like that?
There is, but, you know, in a couple of the prior meetings that I had an opportunity to attend, I know Ms. Sabash just even commented she wasn't very clear on the operating procedure. Like, how is this done? She said, I kind of look at it like a wish list. So I did take some opportunity from the last meeting until now to kind of look into it, and that's why I'm asking, are we going to clarify? Because from my understanding, five-year plan is just that, it's a plan. But the one year that we're voting on, that's the budgeted process. So that's where I think the residents are very confused, and there needs to be the language change and clarification on that. So I don't, I still am not even sure, and maybe Mr. Cunningham can weigh in here, are we voting on a five-year plan? Because then we'd be doing it every year. Or are we only voting for the one-year budget, but we may have a five-year capital plan?
I'll recognize the person I want to speak to.
Thank you.
It's a five-year capital program. Program itself lists all the things you want to do for the next five years. It's not part of a budget. A budget, the only two budget items are item one, which is board of education, item two, which is the town. That's your budget. So technically, even if the third one doesn't pass, you have a budget in place and ready to go. What you're doing is, for the five-year capital program, is explaining that, these are the things I'd like to be able to do, in that, but it doesn't tie directly to a budget. You don't, you can't hold us saying that, I have $100,000, I'm going to buy a new vehicle. It's just an opportunity, if you were able to get another vehicle with a grant, and that's the example I've used. I would be honest by saying, if you take a look at the board of education, their list is down there, huge list, they're not going to do all those things every single year. Is this my way?
I think I want to take a look at theirs either, I think I want to review more of what the state's producing. Because it seems to me, and it looks like, there's a possibility we've actually been doing something wrong, because they do define a plan, a capital improvement plan, very different than they defined a capital improvement budgeted year. So that's, I don't know enough, so...
Usually we're budget, I understand that it's confusing, but it's not a budget. The only two budgets we have are board of ed and town. This is just a capital program.
Wish list.
You can consider it a wish list, but like I said before, if you don't have it on that list, you're not going to get grants for it.
You can't vote for grants. But, okay, but like the low-sip money, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Low-sip, yeah.
Is that not funded by a grant through the state?
That's different. That's MSRE monies, they have low-sip monies, roadway monies.
But there are other towns that actually include that in their capital budget.
Every town does it a little differently, but in their budget, their annual budget.
Well, their capital budget.
Well, they do it differently than we do. Everybody can do it differently. It's not required. If you take a look at different towns around east, down the coastline, you can see that they have 150 to 200 pages for their budget process. So everybody does it differently.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we need clarification. 10-5-C says, the actual authorization of the capital improvement shall be encompassed by their inclusion in the annual operating budget of the town. So once it's voted on, it has to be put in the operating budget of the town. That's what we define right there.
There's so much pressure here.
You just can't say it's a wish list that you voted on, it has to be in the budgetary process.
For the operating year, not the whole plan.
Yeah, I don't think it reaches out for five years.
Well, hopefully not for five years.
Maybe one more. So that's what I'm saying with 10-5, with the capital improvement, how it binds into the operating budget for the year, because the states, they should do. And nobody seems to know that, that it's like, oh, it's just a wish list on the side, and it's not going to be put in the budget. And it's like, no, it needs to be put in the budget.
So, okay.
Right now, it's in the budget.
The clarification, the clarification that's being signed.
It's in the budget. It's in here. Third question.
Mr. Gagney, I'll recognize it when it's time to, I'll recognize it, thank you. Just I want to be clear, so you're identifying section 10-5-C as part of the clause that would need some additional clarification, or that we need to understand better?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Gagney, did you have a...
2-4-C.
2-4-C.
Says, third question will be to approve or reject the capital budget. It's there.
The capital budget or the plan are...
Budget, it says.
Okay.
But it's voted on, but it's not added to the actual operating budget, as C says it should be.
The art's saying in that section it is, so we'll go with it.
And Matt has an understanding of that. Idea from the chair on that.
I, I am still very much trying to make sure that I understand all possible interpretations of how many clauses all move together at the same time.
of how many clauses all move together at the same time, because that's, and trying to make sure that it's something that is within the scope of a charter revision question that we can approach as well.
That's my point.
So that's why a lot of my follow-ups are concerning clarification of what we're looking to potentially change as far as verbiage in the charter goes, because that's the starting point for any of the work that we've done so far. Now, I appreciate, I, as you've noticed, I am not going to try to interrupt a discussion if we're talking about the matter at hand, but I would like to try to avoid any rapid fire back and forth, so we don't lose track of what we're discussing. Naomi?
So I just wanted to get clarification, Mr. Gagney is basically clarifying that in another section of the charter, it is saying that it goes from a capital plan to a capital budget into the annual operating budget.
It's not before that. Talks about the capital plan in two-four D after it's voted on. It'll be presented by the board of finance. It says, in D, in preparing and presenting the town budget, the board of finance will also prepare and present the capital budget, and will include a five-year plan and provisions for voting on a capital improvement program.
So when I'm reading that, I'm, I'm seeing both capital budget, five-year plan, and capital improvement program, all mentioned.
That's right.
And that, and I know that that is part of that two-point-two-dash-four section that is under review, that we are looking at.
So that's, that's work, maybe something that's desired.
It almost sounds like you have a full different budget portion, and that would basically probably move forward the ballot.
Well, and, and I will speak to that. This highlights the importance of having the aforementioned red line version, right? Because changing just a couple, one question that might be one or two lines is going to rewrite paragraphs within section two-point-four potential. And so we need to make sure we understand.
Exactly.
And it won't take that much room on the ballot for the question, but the scope and the scale of the change is still pretty significant. So I would, I would say, yes, we, we have quite a bit to do as far as that goes as well.
Unfortunately, you're brought in the whole charter, you might want, you might want to just narrow it down to that one section, the budget area.
Thank you for being patient with me, I just want to make sure I get your comments noted in addition to the work here as well. Mr. Gagney?
There was one other thing I brought up, whenever, a couple months ago. In chapter seven, section seven-one, appointment by board of selectmen. Section seven-two, additional boards and commissions. Section seven, seven-dash-seven, appointment. I'd asked if you could look at the three of those, and make some sense of them, what they actually mean, if there's redundancy. Because are, are they talking about appointing members? Are they talking about appointing actual boards in those three sections? And on section one-B, civil preparedness advisory council, I don't think there's an ordinance for that, so. And to answer your question, Sean, it says it shall consist of seven members, including representatives of the fire districts. That's it, they'd be four-year terms.
Just a quick note on seven-dash-two specifically, I can speak to that. My understanding of that was that we, we mentioned legislative body much earlier in the meeting, since we are established as the legislative body being the town meeting, that's why the positioning of seven-dash-two would be in there. That was my understanding. I believe we spoke to that at a previous charter revision as well in 2022. I don't think the question advanced very far, but I do believe we had spoken to that as well. Seven-dash-seven, I'm still working on.
That, yeah, that would coincide with seven-two, if the town meeting does it.
Whether it would be.
Those three, those three things, just for clarification, what, what they are, yeah.
Anyone else this evening for the charter revision revision? Thank you, Barbara Snell.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate the kind words.
We all do.
If there are no other suggestions or comments, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
June, motion. Cheryl of the second. Motion is being seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn.